President, I call to order the March 19th meeting of the City of West Sacramento City Council, the West Sacramento Redevelopment Agency, and Finance Authority. We will begin with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we live, work, learn, and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous people of West Sacramento, who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original inhabitants, who have occupied, maintained, and secured this place, and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous people still connected to this land on which we gather. The council met in closed session this evening. On the agenda are the items what you see we reviewed. Mr. City Attorney, would you please provide a report?
As a result of the closed session, there's nothing to report this evening.
Right, thank you. As is noted on our agenda, city council is prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any action on items that are brought up under Item 1 for public comment, but it provides an important opportunity for a public forum. The public is given an opportunity at this time to address city council on issues not listed on the agenda. And we do ask that anyone wishing to speak to address the council on this or any other item on this evening to please fill out a request to speak card and return it to the clerk. We accept the request to speak cards up to the conclusion of the reading of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the staff report has been read, we open the item up for public comment. The clerk will announce your name for you to walk to the podium to speak. Now, in front of the clerk, there is a timer to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard, and we ask that all comments be limited to the specified number of minutes, which in for public comment, it will be three minutes. Also, in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart, which indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety, so we request that there be no applause, boos, cat calls, or other demonstrations. Furthermore, so that we may maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers, we ask that those in attendance and those who address the city council abide by the code of conduct posted and not speak in loud, threatening, offensive, abusive, disrespectful, or any other language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. We have here our, you know, police officer, so if there is any disruption, he can escort you out. And now this brings us to Item 1, presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council, and each person has three minutes to speak. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker is Rosa Fernandez.
I did miss one thing. Sorry, Ms. Fernandez. We do have a pledge of allegiance that we need to, we'd like to invite Mr. Jesse Ortiz to please come up to the podium and lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Yeah. Hi.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States. Congress. Mission.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. All right. Now for our first speaker again. Madam Clerk, the name please.
Rosa Fernandez.
Ms. Fernandez.
Okay. So, I don't normally come to these things, but like many Americans right now, I am frustrated and see local change as an outlet to make lives better in our community. I watched the last council meeting, and I decided to come here because of something someone said. Where are the community members who support this development? I am here. I am here to say I support community development in building housing here in West Sacramento. In fact, I support removing red tape so that it doesn't take over a decade to break ground. I agree that flooding is a concern, but we are in a climate crisis. The solution to a climate crisis is not to block the development of housing. The fact of the matter is, we have much more pressing crisis that has the most harmful effects on our community right now, and that is the housing crisis. We are in an affordability crisis. Had I not purchased my home when I did in 2019, I could no longer afford to live in West Sacramento. We are a family of four. We love living here. It is close to my work, and my neighbors are amazing. And every day when we ride bikes to the school bus stop, I think how lucky we are. This place is special. Because West Sacramento is small yet mighty, there is a real opportunity to lead the charge in California to add housing quickly. And I am so happy to see so many new projects come to fruition. But in my opinion, it is not happening fast enough to meet demand. California is notorious for regulations and how easy it is for third parties and a small but loud contingent of community members to stall development. People are leaving the state because it is so expensive to live here. We have the highest rates of homelessness. This is not helping anyone in our community nor our state when we stall housing. We are in a crisis. Please make it easier to build. We need any and all housing, tiny homes, medium homes, apartments. Be the solution to the housing crisis. Provide opportunities for low-income folks, for young families, for seniors on fixed incomes. This is not to say no government oversight. We all want competent governance. We all want efficient government. We want our taxpayer money spent responsibly. We want leaders we can trust who can make the decisions needed to move West Sacramento forward. And while I am here, I hope with the new developments there will be increased building of bike trails away from traffic. I ride my bike to work on occasion, and I would ride it every Okay. So I don't normally come to these things, but like many Americans right now, I am frustrated and see local change as an outlet to make lives better in our community. I watched the last council meeting, and I decided to come here because of something someone said. Where are the community members who support this development? I am here. I am here to say I support community development and building housing here in West Sacramento. In fact, I support removing red tape so that it doesn't take over a decade to break ground. I agree that flooding is a concern, but we are in a climate crisis. The solution to a climate crisis is not to block the development of housing. The fact of the matter is, we have much more pressing crisis that has the most harmful effects on our community right now, and that is the housing crisis. We are in an affordability crisis. Had I not purchased my home when I did in 2019, I could no longer afford to live in West Sacramento. We are a family of four. We love living here. It is close to my work, and my neighbors are amazing. And every day when we ride bikes to the school bus stop, I think how lucky we are. This place is special. Because West Sacramento is small yet mighty, there is a real opportunity to lead the charge in California to add housing quickly, and I am so happy to see so many new projects come to fruition. But in my opinion, it is not happening fast enough to meet demand. California is notorious for regulations and how easy it is for third parties and a small but loud contingent of community members to stall development. People are leaving the state because it is so expensive to live here. We have the highest rates of homelessness. This is not helping anyone in our community nor our state when we stall housing. We are in a crisis. Please make it easier to build. We need any and all housing, tiny homes, medium homes, apartments. Be the solution to the housing crisis. Provide opportunities for low-income folks, for young families, for seniors on fixed incomes. This is not to say no government oversight. We all want competent governance. We all want efficient government. We want our taxpayer money spent responsibly. We want leaders we can trust who can make the decisions needed to move West Sacramento forward. And while I am here, I hope with the new developments, there will be increased building of bike trails away from traffic. I ride my bike to work on occasion, and I would ride it every day, but when I do ride, I fear an oil tanker is going to take me out, and I won't make it home to my kids every time I ride on South River Road between Fifteenth and Locke. The new lanes under the freeway are very welcome. And again, the red tape to do these projects costs the city extra time and resources, like housing. These projects should be made faster by removing red tape. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez.
Jesse Ortiz.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. I'm here tonight to ask for your support of SB two-two-six, which is a bill by Senator Cabaldin, our senator. You have a copy of a fact sheet of the bill in front of you. Hope you've got a copy of that there. Again, my name is Jesse Ortiz. I'm a member of the Yuba Community College District. I'm not here representing the board. I want to make that very clear for the minutes. I'm here as an individual of the board and someone who believes in SB two-two-six. On September nineteen seventy-five, the California Board of Governors, which is the California Community College Board of Governors that runs the one hundred and sixteen community colleges, voted to split Espardo and Woodland into the Yuba Community College District. It was the first time in history that the Board of Governors put a community in an area or part of a community college district that they did not want to go into. Fifty years later, we in Woodland and Espardo are dealing with the issue of what is best for our students and higher education. I'd like to give a brief synopsis, a very brief synopsis with limited time I have, on how we got here. So in nineteen seventy-two, the California legislature gave each city until September fifteenth, nineteen seventy-five, be part of Community College District. In June of seventy-three, Davis and West Sacramento voted to annex into the Los Rios Community College District. In November seventy-four, winners voted to annex into Solano Community College District. In March, in nineteen seventy-four, there was a measure called Measure C for Woodland and Espardo to see where they wanted to go. Unfortunately, the California Community College Board of Governors only gave those constituents or that community, those communities, one vote, and that was to either vote into Yuba Community College District. That was it. Yes or no? Well, eighty-one percent of the people in Woodland and Espardo voted against Yuba Community College District with intent of coming into Los Rios. Fifty-two years later, or fifty-three-plus years later, we're still in that situation. This bill, SB two-two-six, sponsored by Senator Cabaldin, is called the Territory Transfer Between District, which would put Woodland and Espardo into the Los Rios Community College with West Sacramento and Davis. It makes economically sense. It makes career planning sense for our, all five districts to be in one district, and we're hoping for your support with a letter to, to support this to the senator. Thank you for your attention on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. If you can work with Doug Dross, he helps, he's right there, and he can help bring it to our attention.
Robin Davis.
I'm Robin, and I live in my one hundred and sixty-square-foot semi-off-grid tiny home on wheels on my undeveloped residential property here in West Sacramento. Just wanted to share the update on the tiny home on wheels ordinance from the planning department. It should be added to the April ninth council agenda and had to be moved due to Assembly Bill two-nine-zero-four, which requires at least twenty days of notice of an ordinance impacting real property, and the notice was posted on March seventh in the newsletter. So we need to wait a minimum of twenty days from that date. Thank you again to Daniel in the planning department, who remains very transparent with all the updates each week. We appreciate him as always. So as of now, the tiny home on wheels ordinance may be coming back to council on April ninth. And I just wanted to quickly recap a little history of our potential ordinance and how we got here. We started this tiny home journey together in October of twenty twenty, which was such a unique time in the world where there were no in-person meetings the CDC issued to not displace camping of unhoused and had shelter-in-place mandates. As I navigated COVID, speaking with staff, learning about zoning, impact fees, and codes, I realized our policy and mindsets have catered to wealthy developers while excluding the average person from the building process. Then, November of twenty twenty-two, I started to attend council meetings to escalate my request for legalization after I received the notice to abate to move my home. We then shared all the jurisdictions that were creating ordinances that would legalize homes like mine. Since then, I've been to every single council meeting, attended SACOG meetings, neighborhood association meetings, SAC Regional Sewer meetings, commission meetings, board meetings, any meetings that anyone will listen or talk to me, countless amount of time to figure out ways forward. I've even been accused of being a paid lobbyist for tiny home developers and how I wish that was the case, but in reality, I am just an average persistent resident with a very average income that lives in a shipping container who just wants portable access to water. Overall, I've learned so much, and I would not create a minute of it. To wrap it up with a quote from Joyce Meyer, patience is not the ability to wait, but the ability to keep a good attitude while waiting, which is what I will keep trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Guy Stevenson.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, I appreciate you because you check that out, in which I did too. I call Woodland just about every day, and environmental health says that they've had numerous complaints, not just a few, but numerous complaints about the food vendor. And I'm going to tell you where the problem's going to come in. When the A's come here, they're going to be everywhere, and you have to get a grip on it and get a hold on it. You can't let it go on. I don't want anybody with food poisoning. If you've never had it, it's not pleasant. I'm not saying that the food that these people are serving is bad for you, but they have no way of regulating the heat. So I do appreciate talking to you about that and following up. I think a lot of the police department here, as well as the fire department here, they're doing an excellent job right now cleaning up West Capitol of these drugs, and I do appreciate them. And I appreciate the fire department being very good about keeping people healthy. One of the ladies that I take care of down here on West Capitol, they had two in the last couple of months fit in all overdoses, and they died, and they ended up in Woodland. So I'm glad that the police are taking a real good stance on that because it's very, very important, and I was just talking to the sergeant, they're doing a really, really good job. And public work. They've been filling these potholes, and that makes my friends and me very happy. They've done enterprise, industrial, and they're trying to get a hold on it. So I'm not here to throw any of these departments under the bus. I want them to be aware of how the public feels about things that go on here. I haven't been here that long. I've been here three years, and I came from San Diego. So I used to go to city councils all the time down there in Vista and Oceanside, and I know how it works. So I'm just saying, please focus on these vendors. I don't want to run them out of business because I know that's their livelihood, and they're making money. Just make them be compliant, you know, get a license, have the health department check them out. I don't want to see anybody get sick, and I definitely don't want to get, see anybody end up in the morgue or end up in the hospital. And yes, food poisoning can kill you. So anyway, ladies, have a great night, and God bless each and every one.
Thank you, Mr.
We have no additional requests to speak on this item.
Right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have under presentations, three presentations under the City Manager's office, and we'll go in this order. We'll begin with the American Red Cross. Next is the Transgender Day, and third will be the Caesar Chavez Day. So with the first one being a proclamation of the City of West Sacramento City Council recognizing March twenty twenty-five as American Red Cross Month, and we have Councilmember Karina Rosco will be doing that presentation, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that, that frontish of my name tonight. That was beautiful. I'd like to have Guy Michelleir and Fred Bustillos and Laura Barrett. Please approach the podium. Thank you so much. I see you're adorned in red. Thank you. Well, I've had the opportunity to present this proclamation. Thank you to the Madam Mayor for allowing me to do so tonight. And what I'm going to do is read the proclamation before you offer the opportunity for any one of you to give brief remarks to the community about Red Cross. I understand we all received an envelope as well to describe what it is that you've provided and let the community know how you've afforded Charlie every single person to be very helpful to us. So tonight, we're going to offer the proclamation of the City Council designating March two thousand twenty-five as American Red Cross Month. The proclamation reads, whereas since the early nineteen hundreds, the American Red Cross has provided aid to local families in need and played a critical role in helping prevent, prepare for, and respond to emergencies, and whereas today dedicated volunteers in our community and throughout the Red Cross California Gold Country region continue to serve as a beacon of hope for those in need, and whereas over the past year, a local chapter of the American Red Cross has conducted two significant free smoke alarm installation events in West Sacramento, one at Valhalla Mobile Home Community and another in collaboration for Habitat for Humanity in the Brighton-Broderick neighborhood, while also facilitating individual alarm installations by appointment in the city, whereas the American Red Cross has partnered with Westfield School to deliver a bilingual hands-only CPR presentation for parents, whereas in March, we'll implement paired with Pedro presentation for elementary school students, along with two be Red Cross ready presentations, one tailored for middle school students and another for faculty, ensuring comprehensive disaster preparedness within the school community, and whereas this lifesaver program remains vital to strengthening our community now for, therefore be proclaimed that the City Council of the West hereby marks as American Red Cross, as being supported with its humanity. Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I was remiss in asking, do we want as soon as the photo?
And I would like to include Chief Binns in the photo, please, when we do come up, because they work hand in hand. There is an event in a home. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Council members, City Manager. Red Cross Month being March twenty-five, the mission of the American Red Cross is to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of the donors. The American Red Cross has been able to provide help, comfort, and services for more than one hundred and thirty years because of the tireless and dedicated work of its volunteers and partners. As a nonprofit organization, the Red Cross depends on the public's generosity to perform its humanitarian mission, and we really, really appreciate all your support. Myself, being part of the American Red Cross, we are dedicated to be in the DAT team, the disaster action team, colleague here Laura also and Wally. We basically respond to all sorts of emergency, from house fires to flooding to fires, and it's an honor for us to be here and accept your proclamation. Pass the microphone to my colleague.
Thank you. It's an honor to serve the city of, of West Sacramento, and I was going to mention some of the things that we do to kind of help enlighten, but you already did such a great job of listing some of the programs, not only the DAT team that responds to fires, but also some of the classes we serve to help with preparedness and, and the Sound the Alarm has done. Thank you for highlighting those. We're really proud of our programs, and we're really honored to be here and want to present the Red Cross into the mayor. Don't know if I can, just leave it here. Chief Binns will take, right, he's standing up. Absolutely. In the microphone, please, Chief, so that everybody in the.
Yeah, I would personally like to thank the Red Cross for everything you do for our citizens. We've been calling you for my entire career. You show up at every residential structure fire where the tenants or homeowners are displaced, and they don't have a family member's house to go to. Call Red Cross, take care of you, find them a place to stay. It happened again this morning. So every time we call, someone shows up, and I really appreciate everything you do. Thank you very much.
Just want to highlight one more thing is that over forty percent of the blood donated in this country comes from volunteers that donate blood on a regular basis. Over forty percent is, and we need more blood donors, especially what we call the power donor, as myself, because they take the platelet and all the fancy stuff that they do with the blood. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, as you mentioned, you did get a brochure, which I had staff distribute to each of you, and inside that is a, several pages. It has to do with opportunities within Red Cross, and there's a number of mentioning of the free things that we offer to people that are affected by these disasters and emergencies. There's no charge for any of the things that we do, and we are always, as I said, opportunities, we're always looking for other people to join us in Red Cross. So I direct that to the guests that are out here as well, because it's a volunteer organization, and if you have that desire to help, then we're definitely the place to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the proclamation of the West Sacramento City Council recognizing March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five as Transgender Day of Visibility, and we have Mayor Pro Tem Sofie Zio Hope presenting that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to invite members of the River City High School's Gender Health Club to the podium. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm going to read the proclamation, give you an opportunity to speak, and offer my colleagues an opportunity to speak, and then I have some comments as well. The proclamation of the City Council, City West Sacramento City Council recognizing March thirty-first as Transgender Day of Visibility, whereas each year on March thirty-first, the world observes Transgender Day of Visibility to raise awareness about transgender people and to recognize the lives and contributions of trans people by also drawing attention to the poverty, discrimination, and violence that community faces. And whereas, March thirty-first is a day to honor and celebrate the achievements and resiliency of transgender and gender diverse people and acknowledge their determination to live openly and authentically. And whereas, transgender people still face systemic barriers to freedom and equality, including high rates of violence, harassment, and discrimination in employment, housing, healthcare, and public accommodations. And whereas, the City Council of West Sacramento has a vision of community that is welcoming and safe for everyone, including transgender and gender diverse people. And whereas, Transgender Day of Visibility is an opportunity for the city as a whole to recommit to building partnerships with transgender and gender nonconforming communities to address challenges and further to work lifting the voices and needs of this community. And whereas, we recognize the bravery of all community members who decide to live their lives being their most authentic self. And whereas, March thirty-first is an opportunity to acknowledge the progress made while recognizing there is much work to be done, or much more work to be. Now, therefore be proclaimed. Or much more work to be. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of West Sacramento hereby recognizes the 31st day of March as Transgender Day of Visibility and encourages all residents to observe this day. Like you'd like, give you the opportunities, you'd like to share a little bit about yourselves in the club.
Uh, thank you. My name's Wyatt. I accept all pronouns and this is BB. From under the. Really appreciate this. And hopefully other places. It's just really awesome for our community and our school getting this honor. Um, we, our club, the Gender Health Club, creates a safe space for queer people at our school. I don't really know what to say next.
That's perfect. Any comments from anyone?
I want to thank you for being here. I know these were really trying times under the current administration. So the fact that you're visible and you should be very visible and very proud. I think that's setting a very strong message. And especially here in West Sacramento, when we acknowledge this, bringing this resolution up. I think it's something that I'd like to see in other cities as well. And we stand strongly behind the rights of people to express themselves and be who they are. So thank you.
Are we going to take a picture?
I have comments.
All right, all right, I'll go. So one, I just, I want to thank you guys for frankly, the safe space that you make at your school for others who may not always feel seen, included. Being able to have a place where you know that you will be fully accepted for yourself is so important. And I know that I speak for all of my colleagues in saying, part of why this is so important for us is because we want all of West Sacramento to be a place in which everyone feels included, in which everyone feels seen, in which we are leading with equity. And so thank you so much for your courage. Thank you for being here and accepting this. And know that you guys are doing an amazing thing at your school by showing up and making space for folks who may have different backgrounds. And then we also stand in solidarity both with our transgender and non-binary community members. Thank you.
I'll be, I mean, that I'm going to say what I mouth, but I will say that, thank you so much. Uh, it's hard enough to come to a podium as an adult, you know, a public speaker in experience and come up in your authentic self, as you're a, say your name is a. We're standing for what we believe in. I think that these days it's really hard to yourself live without fear. Rejecting the greater world regardless of your life, even if you live whatever the mainstream be. I think that the world is becoming tolerant and I'm grateful young forward. Ask for a. We, we can. Environment.
And just want to say that I know this times today is very trying and challenging. To feel embraced for who you are. And I know that we're here, we here in West Sacramento have a diverse community. And you are part of that diversity. You are a community that I'd hope to shine more light, bring more visibility, bring more love and peace so that we can eradicate the hate. We can remove any sign of rejection. That we also, you know, even through the medical system, you know, that we take a look at support, you know, whenever anybody decides to make any transformation with themselves as we take a look at what is happening today in society. In just trying to control people and make them who they want them to be, not who you are. And accept you for, you know, who you feel and have decided to become. And that's what we all do in our own way. And we want you to feel comfortable. We want you to feel accepted and appreciated. You have so much to contribute. Most importantly, your courage, your strength, your resilience, and a hope. You are the beacon of hope for our community. So continue the good work.
And then I'll just say, thank you for the work that you do with the Gender Health Club. As my colleagues alluded to, the safe space you create on campus is so powerful. And I want to thank my colleague for supporting, bringing this proclamation forward. It's wonderful to be in solidarity with you on this. At a times when the rights and dignity of transgender, non-binary people are being challenged across the country, this proclamation is more than just words. It's our commitment to you that we see you, we value you, and we will continue working to make our city a place where you can not only exist, but you can truly thrive. I'd like to close with a quote from a true icon, Lady Gaga, because really, how fun is it that I get to bring up Lady Gaga at a city council meeting, but in a conversation recently about her song Born This Way, which inspired somebody to come out, she responded with these words. I believe that we will continue to show people that are filled with hatred and ignorance, they should be looking up to the queer community, following and learning about love and learning about grace and kindness. And so today we look up to you. We honor your courage, your authenticity, and your love. Thank you for being exactly who you are, because you're on the right track, baby. You were born this way.
Next is our proclamation of the West Sacramento City Council recognizing March 31st, Cesar Chavez Day. And we have today Dr. Jesse Ortiz, if you can please come up to the podium and share a few words and like to allow for council to share a few words as well. Chair of the Board of Directors of the Farm Workers Institute of Education, is that the current?
Farmworker Institute Educational Leadership Development Field. Yeah.
And former Yolo County Superintendent of Schools. He's got a long resume, but I'm going to just mention a few things. And he helped establish the Head Start Program in West Sacramento, here in our city, which my little grandson attended. It was a huge help, especially with his disabilities and his challenges. And has also been a big supporter of our boxing programs in Yolo County, which has redirected many young lives in West Sacramento. And I'm going to read the proclamation and then Dr. Ortiz, if you can share a few words. Here from you. Whereas Cesar Chavez dedicated his life to advocating for the rights, dignity, and fair treatment of farmworkers, championing social justice through nonviolent activism and unwavering commitment to economic and labor rights. And whereas Cesar Chavez co-founded the United Farm Workers of America, AFL-CIO, the first successful farmworkers union in U.S. history, securing vital collective bargaining rights and improved working conditions for countless labors. And whereas, through his leadership, the UFW won landmark agreements that improved wages, health protections, and living conditions for farmworkers, setting a precedent for labor rights movement across the nation. Whereas Cesar Chavez was a visionary leader in the broader fight for civil rights, organizing peaceful demonstration strikes and nationwide boycotts to amplify the voices of marginalized workers and to demand dignity, equality, and respect for all. And whereas, the city of West Sacramento honors the enduring legacy of Cesar Chavez, recognizing his profound contributions to the labor movement and his role in inspiring future generations to continue the pursuit of social justice and workers' rights. And whereas, on March 31st, individuals and organizations throughout the country commemorate Cesar Chavez's birthday by engaging in community service, educational activities, and advocacy efforts that reflect his commitment to equity and service to others. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of city of West Sacramento hereby recognizes the 31st day of March as Cesar Chavez Day and encourages all residents to reflect on his teachings, honor his legacy, and take action in their communities to uphold the values of justice, equity, and dignity for all proclaimed this 19th day of March 2025. Dr. Ortiz, you truly embody all of these values and have been such a role model for our youth, for the community, for the entire community. I'm so grateful that you're here to accept.
Thank you, and to the city council for doing this proclamation. I think it's important that Cesar Chavez's spirit and life continue. He would have been 98 years old this year, this month, I should say. On behalf of the many advocates that work on behalf of the farmworkers and those behind the scenes, I'm, I'm, thank you for letting me attend this evening's meeting and appreciate really accepting the certificate. You know, there's approximately 8,000 farmworkers in Yolo County. A little bit more, it varies from 8,000 to 10,000 over the last few years. And what Cesar Chavez did for those farmworkers in many vulnerable communities during the civil rights struggles of 1960s, and particularly obviously, he demanded human rights and human dignity for those vulnerable populations. More important to me as an individual and my family growing up, and I had my first view of Cesar Chavez as an individual and on Easter Sunday in 1966, when the UFW marched from Delano to Sacramento to the capitol. I was there and was a very young person, honestly. But that day was very critical to me in developing my philosophy today as an adult that people should be treated with dignity. People should be treated with respect. But one thing that I learned that day was the power of one person, the power that one person can make. And I would call it something called spiritual power. Because that individual, Cesar Chavez, and many others behind him and supporting him, including Dolores Huerta, taught the lesson that with vigilance and persistence, you can change the world. And you can change, and then on behalf of those that are least spoken for, have least political power, but you can make the difference in people's lives in general and beyond farmworkers too. So I'm really happy and thank you for letting me join you this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. Anybody have words to share tonight?
Like a brief. Yes, um, so it's interesting because I think Cesar Chavez Day to me is more than just a celebration. It's a call to action. And I think we've actually talked about this during some of our strategic planning meetings, right? Where it's like, not only do we want to celebrate, but how can we actually in the spirit of the work that was done, truly represent that? And I think now more than ever in which people need to be seen as human beings and we need to respect the dignity and human rights of everyone in our community and across our country. I think this proclamation and this day is even more important as a call to action with everything that we are seeing in our values as Americans being challenged. And so that is what Cesar Chavez Day means to me. That is the legacy that he left behind for all of us to step up to and truly embody and honor. And so I thank you for being here. I feel a privilege to be on this council because I do think that those are the values of West Sacramento. And my hope would be that we reflect those and be a beacon of light for this region. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ortiz, Jesse, and also his wife Cruz, also been very involved in supporting farmworker rights. And I was just going to mention, you all know Carlos worked with Caesar and with Dolores. This wasn't just their attorney, he was actually their neighbor. But that spirit, I think, of commitment and wanting to help others, just it permeated the entire farmworker movement. There were attorneys, Ellen Eggers and Sue Lyon, Marco Diaz, oh, I'm sorry, Marco Diaz, who, Marco Diaz Lopez, there we go, who committed themselves to working endless hours and they used to get a $7 a week stipend. These are people who had made a lot of money, but it was more important for them to be out there representing these individuals. Carlos often mentions also that they didn't have paid staff in those. They had volunteers, accountants from the Catholic Church. They had priests and nuns that would go out there on Thursdays and Sundays. And they would do all the accounting for the union. One of our own Davis residents, Desiree Rojas, and her family were very involved in the farmwork. Whole family was, Al Rojas's wife. They were one of the primary organizers for the great boycott from 1968, 1975. Long time. They were getting paid 10 years, $5 a week. It would just, it just embodies so much when we celebrate Cesar Chavez with a resolution every year. Because it's the commitment and the incredible spirit that I think we all try to capture on this day. And I did have a quote that was, I think, one of Caesar's most powerful and inspiring. "We cannot seek achievement for ourselves and forget about progress and prosperity for our community." All the work being done, fallen, that is really the legacy.
Excuse me, my voice is a little tempered here. First off, I just think, thank you. I'm going to. Go to our. And you for being in. Is it. And why he went out. Here's like. Unspoken word. I'll tell you what, I won't fast to fit into a dress, but when I was in college back in the 90s, I fasted for several days in order to rename our UC Berkeley Golden Bear Center to Cesar Chavez Student Union. And part of the reason is, you know, my grandfather, Kirino Orozco, excuse me, that's my name. Kirino Bienueva was a. His heroes were Barry Young and Philip Veracruz and worked alongside Cesar Chavez during the UCF days when folks were really trying to get voices for more heard, and he was a. And you know, it's, I think, you know, I echo my colleagues when we talk about just celebrating a birthday. It's about celebrating a spirit. It's about celebrating community and the power of these. Other who don't have power in their own voices. So tonight you for us, I actually was going to say my colleague's feet because frankly, there's so much more powerful than what's said. But I do want to say thank you for reminding us. And thank you so much for being champions for our community.
Members, Mayor Pro Tem, please.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight and thank you for all of your work. And I'll just echo my colleagues. I think it's incredible that you have such powerful personal stories about Cesar Chavez. To work alongside and to know people who continue his legacy. Great base folk to, to step up to or on this day is really valuable. So thank you for being here tonight and everything.
And we'll go down and take a photo.
Next is our consent agenda items five through 13. Are there any requests to remove any items on the agenda or request a presentation? If not, are there any public comments, Madam Clerk?
We have no request to speak on any of the items on the consent agenda.
Okay, then I'll accept a motion for items five through 13. Early move. Second. And Councilmember early moved, Councilmember Alcala seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco. Mayor Protem Sulpicio-Hull.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye.
All right, thank you, these items are approved. Next is on our public hearing agenda items is item 14, under Community Development. We do have, we did have a public hearing in consideration of first reading of ordinance 24-9 regarding amendments to Title 17 zoning of the municipal code to facilitate tiny homes on wheels as legal dwellings, and staff is requesting a continuance of this March 19th public hearing to April 9th, City Council regular meeting in order to meet the recent state mandated noticing requirements that went into effect on January 1st, 2025. I wanted to ask Council, do we need to take a vote on this? Do we need to take a vote? I'll accept a motion. Come on. Mayor Protem Sulpicio-Hull moved and Councilmember Alcala seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye.
Item is moved now, and next is item 15, oh, there we go. Under Economic Development is a public hearing to consider adoption of Resolution 25-30 approving the issuance. The California Statewide Communities Development Authority of exempt facility bonds for Courtyard Village and our economic development housing manager, Raul Huerta, will present.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor Guerrero and members of the council. I am here this evening to request that the City Council conduct a public hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFRA. TEFRA requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project will be financed with tax exempt bonds where the project is located, and that the governing body approve the proposed financing. In 2009, the California Statewide Communities Development Authority, or CSCDA, issued $10 million in multifamily affordable housing bonds to assist Evergreen Circle investors to acquire and rehabilitate that 294 unit affordable housing project known as Courtyard Village. At the time, the City Council held a TEFRA hearing and approved a resolution to issue the bonds and support the Courtyard Village project. The bonds matured on December 16th, 2024, and the bond purchaser is requesting an extension of the maturity date by six months to June 16th, 2025. While no new bonds are being issued, the change in the maturity date is considered a reissuance for tax purposes, and a new TEFRA hearing must be held to comply with tax law. There are no other changes to the financing terms of the bonds. The bonds issued in 2009 by the CSCDA will continue to be the sole responsibility of Evergreen Circle investors. The city of West Sacramento will have no financial, legal, or moral obligation, liability, or responsibility for the repayment of the bonds. Upon closing of the public hearing, staff recommends that the City Council adopt Resolution 25-30 approving the issuance, or in this case, the reissuance of the bonds by CSCDA. This concludes my presentation. Staff along with a representative from the developer are available for any question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Are there any questions among councilmembers? Open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
We have no request to speak on this item.
Closing the public comment, bringing it back to council, are there any other questions? Well, I'm really glad that we had this opportunity for these bonds and taking a look at what we can achieve here locally is significant, and thank you for bringing this back to us and staying on top of it. Mr. Huerta, you're always on top of these type of things that help our communities, so greatly appreciated. And with that, I know we're missing a question, but I'll accept a motion. Early second. Councilmember Alcala moved, and Councilmember Early seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sulpicio-Hull.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Item is approved. Next is item 16, is our fiscal year 2024-2025 mid-year budget workshop in consideration of Resolution 25-41 adopting amendments to the operations and maintenance O&amp;M and capital improvement program, CIP budgets for fiscal year 2024-2025. And we have here our Director of Finance Department, Ms. Roberta Raper.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm Roberta Raper, the Finance Director, and I'd like to briefly present an overview of the proposed mid-year budget adjustments. As with all the past times we've done a budget, you have detailed packet in your binder, and we continued the change to the format of the documents this time where there's a summary report and the details, it goes into further details through your attachments. So, get started. Always have to remember how to use this. There we go. Down button. Thank you. All right. So as I mentioned, tonight's presentation will be brief. I usually provide a general fund update of projected revenues and expenditures compared to the budget. We'll go over an overview of the proposed Measure O spending plan, a summary of the proposed mid-year budget adjustments for all funds, and then a summary of the general fund after proposed mid-year adjustments. Members of the council may then ask questions, provide feedback, and consider approval of the proposed mid-year budget adjustments. All right, so to begin, we'll start with a little bit of background as to why we're here in March. The fiscal year 24-25 budget was originally adopted by council in June 2023 as part of the two-year budget process. In the second year of the budget, we typically do a midterm review to look at the second year and adjust for anything that happened during the first year that was revenue adjustments or other things that come up. And we did that in August of 2024. But following adoption of the midterm budget, Measure O in November, Measure O, a once-ent district sales tax measure which applies to taxable retail sales in West Sacramento, was approved by voters to become effective April 1st, 2025. So Measure O is intended to meet unmet operational needs and improve service to the community in several areas, including public safety, roads, and parks. And as these are all important priorities and to ensure swift visibility to the public as to the value in the measure, staff and council intend to be fully prepared to start implementing and spending the funds once they're received. So as a result, the proposed mid-year budget was developed, which includes both mid-year adjustments proposed for various city funds and a five-year spending plan for Measure O. Tonight, we'll be asking you to adopt the budget adjustments for Measure O for the current fiscal year. Future years will be brought back in the upcoming budget processes. The Measure O spending plan was presented to council in February, at which time feedback was provided, and that feedback has been incorporated into the proposed mid-year budget for your consideration tonight. All right, so first we'll take a look at the city's largest and only really discretionary fund, the general fund. The general fund collects general tax revenues and fees for service for the departments at funds, including fire, police, parks, capital projects, and the code enforcement division. A couple of nuggets on this fund that I'm not sure you all are aware of, or anybody in the community really, but approximately 70% of the general fund expenses are for public safety, the fire and police departments, and over two-thirds of ongoing general fund expenses cover labor costs for the four departments that I mentioned. The fund is expected to end the current fiscal year with $83.4 million in revenues to fund $82 million in ongoing expenses, leaving a projected surplus of about $1.5 million over budget due to primarily increases in property tax revenues and reimbursements for firefighter participation and strike teams. After funding one-time expenses of $14.9 million, and it looks like I have a little error on my, oh, is this my, is this the old one? It'd be, it's all right, I saved an updated PowerPoint presentation, but we will skip through because I had a couple of minor adjustments. So after funding one-time expenses of $14.9 million for the year, the net use of fund balance is $12.9 million, leaving a fund balance of $4.5 million for the year. All right. So we will dive into Measure O briefly, and then, as I mentioned, I'll provide a summary of the total mid-year requests so that council can see the full picture. The Measure O spending plan includes annual ongoing expenses growing to $15.5 million per year by fiscal year 28-29 to fund 48 positions, including the nine new firefighter positions that were recently added to reinstate Engine 45. Once the SAFER grant expires, we're proposing to fund those expenses with Measure O and the annual operating cost of implementing the proposed programs, which include a dedicated road response crew. One-time expenses of $28.3 million are proposed in the first two fiscal years to implement $22.2 million in infrastructure projects and to fund the purchase and implementation of $6.2 million in vehicles, equipment, and one-time operational projects related primarily to the new staff that are being proposed. The Measure O positions proposed over the five-year period include 17 police positions, including 12 police officers, a sergeant, two mental health clinicians, a property records manager, and a program technician. I mentioned the nine firefighters, and there are two other positions in the fire department, a road response crew, dedicated road response crew in the public works O&amp;M department. There are 10 positions proposed for that. And then 10 positions in parks and recreation over the next two years, including eight parks and grounds maintenance positions. Overall, it is 48 positions in the Measure O fund over the next two years plus the nine There's 22, a little over 22 million in proposed CIP projects funded by Measure O over the next two years, including $9.4 million in road projects, $7.6 million in parks and trails projects, and $5.2 million in facility projects, primarily public safety facilities. Oh, I'll go back, sorry. Road projects include $2 million toward the pavement preservation program, $6.9 million towards the pavement rehabilitation and reconstruction program, and about $500,000 contribution to the emergency vehicle preemption system project. Parks and trails projects include $5 million for various improvements at all parks, which may include replacing and upgrading turf, playground equipment, and furniture and fixtures. And facility projects, as I mentioned, include several improvements at fire stations, planning and design funding for a new police station, tenant improvements for the park operations maintenance team at the old corporation yard, and a few other related facility projects. So this is a table to show the five-year proposed spending plan for Measure O. It's a lot more complicated in your packet, and this is the simplified version. I know it's a lot of information on the screen. But essentially, Measure O is expected to bring in a little over $5 million this fiscal year and around $21 million annually going forward, and those revenues are projected to grow at a rate of about 3% per year. The Measure O revenues are sufficient to cover the operating needs and one-time costs with a slight deficit projected in the first year. However, this lower trickle of funds doesn't allow for immediate visible progress to be made toward both filling significant operational gaps in the city's primary operating departments and implementing necessary improvements to the priority roadways and most used parks. So in order to fund these necessary and priority projects, as well as to make visible progress in the areas where residents and council would like to see it most, a loan of $15 million from the Measure V fund is proposed with a repayment term of 10 years. This loan of funds reserved for future use will enable several projects to be implemented now rather than waiting for funds to be collected over time. An internal borrowing is both simpler and more cost-effective than issuing bonds or otherwise seeking private financing from a bank. The loan is proposed to be structured in accordance with the city's standing practice on inter-fund loans, which means it's repaid at the rate that the funds would have earned interest if they had been sitting in the bank and not being used. So the Measure V fund is made whole. It also has a defined repayment term of 10 years, and the annual repayment amount is expected to be approximately $1.85 million for 10 years, beginning in fiscal year 26-27. The resolution asks for approval of up to $15 million because it may not, depending on cash flows and timing of spending funds, that amount may not actually be needed. Additionally, a reserve of 15% is proposed to be funded during the five-year period and maintained indefinitely. So with the number of staff positions being proposed to be funded under Measure O, and the fact that sales tax is a very elastic revenue source, which means it moves very quickly up and down with economic impacts, it's important to maintain reserves like we do in the general fund to ensure that an economic downturn or significant impact to sales tax revenues like we saw during the pandemic don't require us to immediately turn around and lay off staff or make other cuts, right? So reserves help us weather these downturns and allow the council to make strategic decisions rather than being fully reactive to economic conditions. So at the end of the day, the balance in the fund after five years is expected to be about $7.2 million, and will have an annual revenue surplus of about $2.5 million after funding, that's after funding the Measure V loan repayment. So the Measure V loan repayment is a 10-year term. After that 10 years, you would have an additional $1.85 million. Those are funds that would be able to be programmed for additional staff or other one-time or ongoing needs. So in February, when the Measure O spending plan was initially presented to council, it included a proposal to implement a park ranger program. That program has been delayed to allow staff and council to monitor the impacts of today's proposals after they're implemented to determine where remaining funds should be programmed, whether that's a park ranger program, additional police officers, roads, other things. You know, the park ranger program as initially proposed is estimated to cost around $2 million annually, so there will be sufficient funding available to fund that program or anything else that the council may desire. And at the end of the day, the reserve balance at 15% will be a little over $3.4 million in five years. All right, so moving on to the rest of the mid-year budget requests for all other, so this includes Measure O here, this is all funds, and total requests are $24.6 million, including $11.1 million in CIP project funding, $10.7 million in one-time O&amp;M funding, operations and maintenance, and $2.8 million in ongoing annual expenses across all funds. These are offset by $4 million in one-time grant revenues and $7 million in ongoing annual revenues, including the $5.3 million for Measure O that we mentioned. For the mid-year O&amp;M operations and maintenance adjustments by category are listed here. The department requests proposed for council consideration with midterm mid-year budget include $10.7 million in one-time funding and $2.8 million in ongoing annual funding across all city funding sources. This slide provides the breakdown by category. Details for all of these requests are included in Attachment 5. And many of these, as I mentioned, are Measure O requests, which were presented a moment ago. The large amount in the other category, you see another $4.4 million of one-time funds, $4 million of that is a proposed contribution of funds from the flood in Lupe Fund to Wasafra to fund their 5% cash match, local cash match toward the federal levy project. All right, for the capital improvement program, the request total $11.1 million, that includes $4 million in awarded grant funding, leaving a net request of city funds of $7.1 million. A number of the requests that are included in your packet are swapping funding sources for bridge district funded projects. There are a small handful. These are offset by four million in one-time grant revenues and seven million in ongoing annual revenues, including the five point three million for Measure O that we mentioned. For the, the mid-year O and M, operations and maintenance adjustments by category are listed here. The department requests proposed for council consideration with midterm, mid-year budget include ten point seven million in one-time funding and two point eight million in ongoing annual funding across all city funding sources. This slide provides the breakdown by category. Details for all of these requests are included in Attachment Five. And many of these, as I mentioned, are Measure O requests, which were presented a moment ago. The large amount in the other category, you see another four point four million of one-time funds, four million of that is a proposed contribution of funds from the flood in Lu fee fund to Wasafra to fund their five percent cash match, local cash match toward the federal levy project. All right. For the capital improvement program, the request total eleven point one million dollars. That includes four million dollars in awarded grant funding, leaving a net request of city funds of seven point one million. A number of the requests that are included in your packet are swapping funding sources for bridge district funded projects. There are a small handful of bridge district dedicated funding sources, and so we are, we are clarifying which projects were funded with bond funds. So there's some minor administrative adjustments there. And then several requests are reducing funding from the water and sewer funds, water fund primarily, toward capital projects to ensure compliance with our bond covenants. These are funds that'll be added back in July. It's just a timing issue, and we need to add them in next fiscal year. It does not impact the timing of the spending or the projects themselves. All right. Moving on to positions, we talked a little bit about the Measure O positions. Across all funds, there are thirty-three new positions requested now for this current fiscal year. Twenty-one of those are funded by Measure O, and eighteen additional positions are proposed for July first, twenty twenty-five. While the budgets for these positions for the eighteen that we're proposing next fiscal year will be considered by council in June, we're asking to add these positions to the authorized position list now, with a little note that they're effective July first, to allow for, there's a lot of work, pre-work to get those ready and start recruitment so that we can get folks hired and in place as soon as possible after the fiscal year And then this, this slide just shows the positions by department, which I thought was a view you may want to see. The operating departments, police, parks and recreation, and public works, operations and maintenance primarily, will be receiving the largest number of new positions, and those are the, the Measure O positions primarily. This chart does not include the nine firefighters that we were able to add a few months ago due to the SAFER grant award, but those will be moved into Measure O in a couple of years. And for, for the other positions, sorry, there are a few other positions. Capital Projects has two positions. As you, I'm sure are aware with the number of capital projects that we're looking to implement, that's going to take a toll on their project management staff, and we want to make sure that we've got staff in all departments to be able to do these and move these things forward. Economic Development and Housing is requesting two positions that are funded by ARPA funds and other grant funds for the homeless program, and then Community Development has three positions included, which include a permit technician. And off the top of my head, I can't, I can't remember one of them, an analyst in the sustainability fund and one other one. All right. So when all is said and done, as you can see in Attachment Seven, all of the funds can handle the proposed budget adjustments and end with positive balances and operating surpluses unless otherwise described in the report and directed by council. In a lot of cases, when we spend one-time funds on CIP projects, you might, it might look like a deficit in a fund, but that's because we save up fund balance until we can afford the projects, and then we, we spend that. So the general fund, this is looking at the general fund, the general fund has ongoing requests of two hundred and nine thousand. That's for the positions, primarily for the, the positions in the capital projects department plus some other operational impacts and plus the expected cost allocation impact of all of the mid-year requests, which is close to nine hundred thousand dollars. This fund will end with a projected surplus of about four hundred thousand after funding the proposed mid-year budget requests. And on a one-time basis, after funding the one-time proposals of four hundred and seventy thousand, the general fund will end with a balance of three point seven million. So there are a couple of actions on the agenda tonight. First, Resolution twenty-five dash forty-one requests the council approval of the mid-year budget adjustments. The resolution also includes repayment of eight hundred and forty-five thousand, or about one-third of the two point six million dollar loan from the police department impact fee fund to Measure N. That was, this was a loan that was approved in April of twenty twenty-four, and it does this through funding two police department expansion projects using Measure G. We're also requesting approval of the loan of up to fifteen million from the Measure V fund to Measure O to fund one-time projects and expenses to be repaid over the next few years. Also, as the midterm, mid-year budget proposes adding thirty-three positions now and eighteen additional Measure O positions in July, we're asking the council to approve the authorized position list and the salary schedule incorporating those changes. And finally, there is an item I didn't mention. The Exhibit B to your resolution is a list of completed projects, which we'd like to close out, and so we're asking that you authorize me, Finance Director, to take the necessary actions to close that list of projects. That does include adjusting the budgets down to match, up or down to match what they spent, returning funds to source, and across all of the funds, there is positive money that's going to be going back to each of the funds. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd like to turn it over now to council for questions or comment.
How much it was going to come this year for Measure O funds?
Sure. We, it looks like it's about, we're projecting five point one million in ongoing revenue and a little over, probably about a hundred and twenty thousand, maybe? We're, we're estimating some one-time revenue from, from baseball and other sources, but yeah, it's about five point three million total is what we're expecting this year.
But that's, that's just one quarter of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Next, next year, it'll be four times that.
Yeah. It start, it's effective April first, so April, May, and June are the, the months that it would be affected, and that's the five point one million that we expect for this year.
But I was. Over here, turned it off. Okay, so I do have a couple of questions. So on page.
I don't have your page.
No, I'm sorry. Let me figure it out what you have here.
Well, I may. I don't, I don't know how it was printed. I probably do. Go ahead, tell me your page.
So it would be, I will name the chart. Table eighteen, two dash eleven. There, these are, so this is the Measure O revenues, the council member I'll call a point, and then the ongoing revenues, and then there's one-time revenues for baseball. Can you help us understand what that, that line item of two hundred and thirty-one thousand for this year?
Yeah.
And ongoing.
So it's a three-year period that the A's will be playing here, and so the first year crosses two fiscal years. The season is about April to September, so we have estimated that we expect to receive about four hundred and sixty-two thousand annually in Measure O and those one-time costs, but for the current fiscal year, it's only the first half of the first season. So we are budgeting half of that amount, two hundred and thirty-one thousand this year, four hundred and sixty-two thousand next year, which would include the second half of this season and the first half of next season. And so it just has to do with the timing, when the fiscal years fall and the dates for the baseball season.
Sorry.
Oh, and the funding is for?
What was that?
And the, and you would know maybe the answer to the question, what the funding is?
Right now, I've, I've got it included here as one-time funding, so it goes to, toward the one-time needs, which would include either the one-time O and M expenses. A lot of that is vehicles and equipment for your road crew, your new police officers and other positions, and park, park, park improvements, park equipment, and CIP projects.
Yeah, and just, and just so we're clear, Revert had kind of said this already, but just to be a little more detailed on that, the, the estimate, the basis of that is how we actually generate sales tax from operations at the stadium. It's purely through concessions and merchandise sales. There is, of course, some multiplier effect of having, you know, larger crowds in the city during those three years. You know, people will eat at restaurants, people will buy gas, and there's sort of those purchases, but this is just at this point, it, it really is an estimate. It's our best guess based on historic data of operations at the stadium. As we get into the first season, we'll have a better picture of what that revenue actually looked like. But just to reemphasize what Revert had just said, there is no specific programmed expenses related to this revenue. This is purely just to capture the additional revenue we're going to see because of this temporary operation at the stadium, but it is truly one-time money. It's not something we can rely on as, as we go forward.
Yeah, and you'll notice there's zero in year five because after the, the three years, we, we don't count on that anymore.
Yes. I, I just wanted to make sure, only because it, it, it sounded like we were, especially when you talked about sort of like the one-time funding and some of the expenses associated with it, what we are talking about here on this chart, the chart is actually up here in the chambers, I have no idea if you can see it on the screen, is these are revenues, these are not expenses. Just, I just, I want to be clear, just for sort of like your, your novice person listening, maybe reading, these are dollars that, again, still one-time, but that we are expecting to receive, not put out. Just want to be clear.
That is correct.
Yes. No, I'll, I'll ask additional questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Revert, for this, this very case. Easy to follow budget. I had a question about who you mentioned. Now, guarded about the general fund reserve, you need it at what percentage?
The general fund is right now at seventeen point three percent.
And so just to be clear, this would be a separate reserve for Measure O fund?
Correct. And yes, it would be a separate reserve specifically for Measure O because Measure O has significant ongoing costs associated with it.
Are there any other reserves in any of the other funds that have?
Yes, there are reserves. Our water and our sewer fund maintain reserves. Most of our funds maintain a fund balance. However, one of the things that we have been planning to bring to the council that I'm hoping, now that we've got someone in our budget finance manager position, is a formal fiscal policy document where we capture and incorporate all of the policies that the council has adopted related to reserves. And I am going to propose that in any fund that has staff, that we do come up with some reserve to maintain. The, the levels might be different depending on how, how much staff they have, and, but this would be separate. This is for the Measure O fund. We do have them for water, for sewer, for some of our more significant operating funds.
And the large, I think that we do definitely have to have fund times price to hedge ourselves from risk. That is down, I have a lot of other, I want to make, we maneuver independently if we're faced with a downturn or, or bad conditions. So appreciate that. I just, I was wondering also, is, when you have a reserve, does it earn any interest or is it hot?
Oh, yeah, it does earn interest. So all of our, all of the cash is pooled for investment purposes. You often get better rates when you pool your cash together, and it's allocated to every fund based on its daily cash balance. So any reserve amount would, would be incorporated into that cash balance, and the fund would earn more in interest because it has a higher balance of cash in it.
And what are the conditions that would trigger any one, any necessity of drawing ever?
Well, typically, we, well, not typically. We cannot withdraw out of those reserve funds without council approval, and those are usually identified as emergencies. There might be a, an economic downturn where we are expecting to have a deficit that we need to fund. We would come to council to, to either request use of a reserve for a short period of time or look at other, other things, or a combination of factors of making cuts and potentially dipping into reserve. But you're looking at a pandemic potentially, an economic recession, disasters as well. Often those reserves are maintained, especially in the general fund, for, in the case of a disaster, where we have to pay out money and wait several years for FEMA, for example, to reimburse.
Well, I appreciate we, we made it through Measure O, and I know you're giving a presentation both on Measure O as a general fund, not to be very specific about what, right, we have pulled into funds that could apply for Measure O in this past, whether or not they would be willing to spend more money and dedicate back to roads, parks, trails, police, fire, address homelessness, keep our breathing through with Measure O budget proposal. Again, this is another huge one, the current one, the large total. We're looking at that as far as how every single penny gets for only those, not for any pet project, not for any homelessness. This is absolutely dedicated, those problems that, for which these funds are used for. So when dedicating funds and putting them before us in this, how was that?
I'm actually going to defer to the city manager. He, he played a big role in that. The, the requests that came in were, were quite a bit larger than this, but I know that he focused very much on the, what it was intended for, the ballot language and what council was intending to see. So Erin, how did, how did you review?
That's a pretty good answer. I, I think what I would do is just kind of remind the council where this all started. I think we go back to when it was two strategic planning sessions ago when we, you know, conveyed to you some concerns around operational gaps in the city that we had been experiencing some for many years, others that were more recently on the horizon. But it was, it was something that we wanted the council to understand and see it not just as a problem, but as a way to think ahead and look at interim measures that we could take at, at that time to address some of those gaps, which, which you did, but also to think boldly about what we could do on a more sustainable basis to not only bring the city up to this elevated standard of operations, but, but then some, you know, bring us up to even, even higher standards when it comes to public safety and roads and parks maintenance. So we followed that last year with a, a workshop at your retreat on options that we could look at to address some of those gaps, and it was at that time the council got behind the idea that, hey, let's look at a, this tax measure as, as an option. Fast forward a bit, and the council approved putting it on the ballot. You gave us direction on the specific items that you wanted to address. That was reflected in the ballot language very strongly. And in the interim time between that and the November election, which fortunately it passed, I asked our staff, and especially the staff in the operations departments, to bring us what their best version of meeting the needs that the council identified would look like. And they delivered on that and then some. I, I showed you several weeks back what the initial budget would have looked like had we been able to do absolutely everything. We can't yet. We don't have quite, quite enough money for that, but we do have a significant amount of funding that can address every one of those things that the council said was important to do with Measure O. So I hope when you, when you look at this report, you, you hear the presentation and see the, the things that we're proposing and tie them back to what you said to voters in terms of what Measure O would accomplish. It, it checked all those boxes and, and then some, I would say. And so that's pretty much how we got here, and I think what you're seeing tonight is just the first step of implementing mostly the staff positions, but a lot of equipment and vehicles and, and CIP projects that fulfill purpose of Measure O. But we also see it as the five-year spending plan shows, this is something that will live forever in our city and will really make a huge impact on things that are very visible to our residents, to our businesses, and to our visitors. So, so I, I really want to take a moment tonight just to acknowledge and thank the council for taking that, that step, you know, starting with two years ago, getting to tonight. You know, we're, we're asking you to consider these proposals, but I hope you'll take a moment of reflection to see where you came from to where you are tonight, and hopefully people, anyone watching or who has been paying attention to this process can appreciate
I just finding everyone, not us, we know we were there, but there was a strategic planning session that we had last month for the five-year half, talking about priorities for the city and how it is a correct Measure O funds with those priorities behind that bench. End of that, about the park ranger program, that is the, the big, some that are, I'm looking forward, several other, we definitely want to see how does needed track, we started to help safety files come up. One of the things that I feel very strongly, and I still look at, I still look at a budget when it comes to our city as a whole, not about district. To me, I think we, we are all elected in the district, represent districts, and we have one elected mayor that's who oversee the, the city as a whole. For me, I oversee as a, on my, but when I look at the, the overall city as a whole, I think about crime, for which some of this, these funds should be directed. I think about homelessness. I think about the impact and incidences of, as being a city where we're located next to the large, one of the largest capitals of the state of California, and its, its own problems, and their policies affect our policies, and what we receive is direct reflection of what it is that they voted on. So with that. So, with that stated, West Capitol Avenue has been a historic roadway in the state of West Sacramento. When people think of West Sacramento, they often say, think it's West Capitol Avenue. That's what they know. That is a corridor that back in the 50s is at its heyday, and there are residents that still live in West Sacramento that remember it as being a glorified area where people actually sunbathed in front, and there were palm trees, and it was the magnet of folks that wanted trouble to this area. If you walk down West Capitol Avenue today, and it's no surprise, you know, we've all seen it, we've all toured, and I think that, you know, one of the, that I felt very strongly about, I want to bring West Capitol Avenue back to its glory days, and I want to make sure that it's a safe place for families and children and our community members to walk and bike and scoot and enjoy the outdoors. I want to make sure that it's an investment that we as a city want to invest in as far as having a dedicated team out there that are monitoring corridor. Oftentimes, we all hear about that, and to get in front of those and ensure that our community is protected. We all are being affected. Every city, every city council that is at the dais, with the exception of a short minority, I'm sure, is talking about the same type of problems affecting the city, roads, homeless, issues with, you know, police and fire and recruitment and retention, because these are just problems that are plaguing the entire state. But we are in a very unique position because we do have this new authority that we can direct strategic to impact the outcomes of how this. And so, when I think about the investment on West Capitol Avenue, I think about, okay, well, we're going to hold off on some things in order to test the waters and see what we can do about making more direct impact immediately. I'm okay with that. I look at these obligations right now, and there are some, of course, I had questions that I wanted to make so I didn't have this meeting here until one in the morning. So, I asked those questions early in order to make sure that I completely understood where the dedication was going, but so long as I understood that each and every dollar is being directed for the particular purpose. I know our community members are, they want potholes filled, they want road repair, they want more cops walking our streets, they want more fire trucks, know that response time is next enough. They want to make sure that we reduce the impact and incidence of homeless. And so, looking at this and seeing the dedication of dollars, I do feel confident that we are doing that, and I do appreciate, Ms. Raper, that you come before our community with a very straightforward mechanism, community that. I know when we get to our annual budget, our annual budget, that those, that is your goal, and we always see in the simplified version with all, that way, people in the public don't have budget backgrounds connected to purpose of this. But, yeah, I appreciate that you've incorporated feedback on the measure, and I don't think I have any other comments or questions at this time, so I'll turn it back.
Thank you.
Any other questions among the council members?
No questions.
Comments? Okay. Thank you, Roberta. I just, you know, on the transition for the CIP projects that are listed, that, you know, we're taking a look at a loan from one of the other measures to, you know, to help jumpstart some things that we feel are urgent here in the city. And as we take a look at the road resurfacing project, I'd like for us to, instead of, you know, the staff deciding immediately which area to work together and make, and, you know, kind of assess what, where we're going to prioritize that area together. And as we take a look at future spending of Measure O and, you know, even other measure funding, incorporate more engagement with the community. I feel like the community has, is very much invested and interested in how we're spending our money. And I know we are making a commitment to try to provide more transparency through identifying projects that are, have an attachment to a particular measure. And I think it helps the community to feel like they're making the right decision when they vote for these projects, when they vote for these measures and see the project improve their quality of life. And this is, I think, you know, the Measure V loan is, you know, given where we're at, I know the question has come up, why are we continuing to save money for a light rail? You know, it's not going to happen. We shouldn't have to worry about a loan. I do think that we provide an explanation. It's been a long time since that money's been sitting there and nothing has happened yet. I know there's something happening, but there's no updates, even an update to our transportation commission as well, even if it's an update that, hey, we're still, you know, here's Measure V, here's where we spent, we're redirecting the money. Here's the reason why. I do believe our commissioners are interested in what we're planning on doing here, even in like economic development, transportation, parks, even in the consideration of park rangers versus something else. As, you know, you present to us what we are assessing, they'd like to be involved as well, is what I've been hearing loudly among the commissioners. And as we take a look at addressing some of these expenditures and, you know, what, you know, a surprise, you know, having the A's present and us having to navigate, you know, heavier traffic and more involvement among our local businesses where we, you know, injected some, you know, financing for their business so that they can, you know, make some minor improvements and helping other businesses who are taking a look at, you know, who are connecting with the community. It'd be very good to help, you know, as we can provide a contribution, taking a put-up a measure and sign. That way, I think people feel like they know where they're, because they know it's sales tax, business owner knows it's sales tax, and they feel they're getting some of that money back, but it is from a particular measure. And I think that helps the entire community, you know, know when they go to a restaurant and they have, you know, a structure that's, you know, keeping them from the elements of one of their favorite restaurants out in the community or sitting in, and they have more beautiful chairs, or the owner looks happier because their electricity bill went down because they got a new refrigerator that's not absorbing all the costs of, you know, higher utility rates, things like that. I think that our community would benefit from knowing all of what we're doing as a city. And so, I think in taking a look at these expenditures are a priority. I did do a, you know, a community meeting, and, you know, there were a lot of representatives from the community as they take a look at where we have spent money in the past and how they would like to benefit, whether it be our trails or bike and pedestrian trails. They also like to see more involvement in, say, for example, the equestrian community where they do chime in a lot and they do say, hey, we like to ride our horses all throughout the city and some of these trails, and we find that there's signs up saying there, you know, there's no trespassing and/or we have to turn around and there's no loop or whatever. So, as we engage in the community to open up these corridors so that everybody can, you know, utilize it, access it, and benefit from it, incorporating their involvement, incorporating their input as we, you know, build things out and making sure that, you know, they feel satisfied. So, there's just, I think, a lot in the community from what we hear, public safety being one of them. In the south area, in the north area, you hear a lot of break-ins and a lot of demands for public safety. And I know we had a robust conversation about whether the, you know, positions that are being filled is sufficient. We'd like a guarantee to see some movement to making that sufficient as well, as well as, you know, seeing that there's a fire engine that can immediately, you know, put out a fire. We want immediately a police officer to protect the community when they feel threatened. When there's somebody out there hit and run, you know, earlier today, and they have a gun, we don't know if it's loaded, we don't know why, but the community, you know, being told to shelter in place, you know, makes them feel less safe. And we'd like to make sure that, you know, fortunately, we have our canines that we can get out there, and we have more equipment that we can put out there to be able to track people. Learned a lot about that, and thank you to the police chief to, you know, with the open house to see our upgraded equipment and very much support our ongoing investment in that so that, you know, we can, you know, provide the protection and the security that the city needs. And also partnering with our, you know, businesses as we also see that we have an investment for any kind of theft and recovery that we can provide with the city, but, you know, working and partnering with like the Riverfront as the A's are coming in, sharing the information so that there is, you know, public safety out there and collaborating with whatever technology they have with our technology. I think that partnership is pretty key, not only up in the Riverfront, but throughout the city. And taking a look at, you know, innovative ways to use technology to provide more security and safety throughout the city. So, you know, with that, there's also the request by our schools for a student resource officer. And just to address that, they had the interest to see a line item for a student resource officer. And just to provide some feedback on that from what I've heard in the inquiry, we did receive that, we did have a conversation in the retreat, and we, I think, are taking a look at what the community stakeholder engagement feedback is before we move forward with the decision in matching, you know, fifty percent of the cost for a student resource officer, if there is that. And I hope that, you know, the parents and whoever else is engaged in the conversation contribute so that we, as a council, are informed. And if there is a commission that needs to be, you know, vetting this as well, Parks and Rec, you know, we do have, you know, that Parks and Rec department or the Parks and Rec area to maybe also listen in because they can contribute in maybe other ways as well to provide support for our youth and the after-school programming. You know, so I'd like to be able to, if it's not just an SRO, what other resources can we provide for our students who are challenged today and having a hard time? You know, just what happens in the schools does affect us in the homes. And whether it be in high school, it affects the middle school, their, you know, siblings and everybody talks. And, you know, my little grandson will tell me stories about what's happening in other schools already. He's tuned in. So, you know, we just like to make sure that those needs are met and we can collaborate closely with our school board members. I know the school board has sent us the letter, but we were under the impression that there is a community stakeholder process before we made that decision, and that's why I think at this point we don't have the SRO line item, correct?
I would have to defer to the police chief on what his officers are going to be.
Yeah, there's an ongoing dialogue with the district, and like you said, they're doing a community survey process to, I think, sort of validate what their direction will be. And in the meantime, we're having conversations internally about some of the things that would be important to the city in order to have that sort of partnership. So, yes, it's a little premature to include it in this budget. By the time we get to the two-year, we'll have that probably more built out at that point, see the chief coming up.
Yeah, just to add to the question I think that was asked, the school district will be announcing those input sessions very, very soon, so they'll be happening in April. So, there's going to be sessions for parents and open community members, for certificated staff or other staff, so they're going to have a pretty broad outreach, both in-person, multiple languages, online.
Okay, thank you. And I did, you know, receive via email, I don't know if you received it as well, I forwarded it to you, you know, just a sign-on, you know, petition of, and I don't, so as far as that being the process, it's not what we had agreed to with the two-by-two. It was this, and if you can provide a little more of a description of the input and how this would weigh into our decision-making process?
Yeah, I'm not certain what you're referring to that was not in alignment, but I know that we did ask them to get community input on what a program would look like rather than us just restarting a program that we had in the past that was then swiftly eliminated. So, we wanted to make sure there was community input. So, through surveying, through these community input sessions, the school district is hosting that and facilitating that so that they can get a broader reach of community input, find out what it is that the community thinks are gaps and how best.
Okay, thank you.
So, I can speak too, just as a parent in the district. I've received numerous emails from the district, both for the survey as well as the informational sessions, and so I think they've done a really good job. I had an opportunity to see Dr. H., superintendent, on Monday at the YCOE superintendent leadership meeting for the community and told her there as well. I have gotten many, many emails wanting and requesting feedback specifically about our SROs and what safety looked like within our schools, and so appreciate that. And questions have also happened at our coffees with principals, and so, again, I think they've done a really good job of trying to make sure that they, and by community, I mean, because I think we use the word community a lot here, but by community, we're really talking about parents, our administrative staff, our school district staff, right, our teachers, and getting their.
Thank you. And I didn't want, and the reason why I'm bringing this up, because I didn't want to dismiss the emails, the change.org petition that was emailed to us and the school board letter. I really want to, you know, I think we agreed, you know, in the two-by-two with the superintendent that this process was going to take place first, and then we were going to come back and make a decision on what we, what kind of programming would work best. And so, with that, you know, I'd like to avail, you know, the process of our resources, commissioners as well, either other opportunities to help our youth, you know, to provide, you know, to receive the support that they need and, you know, just making sure we accomplish that, as well as an SRO, if that's what it, if that's what it takes.
Yeah, thank you. And I do think that what you're saying is true, reflects what was asked and determined out of that two-by-two meeting of the process, and that the process is very, very important before we find a solution without a defined problem and rush to the end that we need to do the process, this input process first. And so, yeah, the question, I think, about the commitment of funds not being made fully yet, I think that was the core of your question. I think you're accurate that that commitment of funds wouldn't happen until we understand what the act will ask.
Thank you.
Yes, so I sit in the two-by-two meeting as well. I just want to clarify, you know, what I heard in that meeting was significant amount of outreach, getting feedback from the community, students, parents, and then they would come, and I say they, the school district, the school board would make a decision with the support of the police department of what the future of SROs would look like. And that would not be a decision that we would be making here at council, but they would be coming to us with a proposal, and then there would be a discussion about resources. Is that correct?
That is my impression. In fact, I've even encouraged them not to even use the naming convention if they could avoid it because that, that sort of can suggest an outcome. So, yeah, their sessions are intended to really be open to trying to understand what the needs of the communities that are truly their immediate stakeholders will be, and then trying to develop, implement best practices, solutions, and really understanding that we're going to have to scale our way into this candidly, you know, as much as Measure O is going to really, really promote in a profound way the growth of the police department to catch up to, on some of the gaps. The reality is, is it takes time to get folks hired. It takes time to get them trained, and we don't want to rush the process of training and hiring with the risk of compromising on what we really should be doing. And so, there's a reality that may mean that we aren't even ready to staff a position that they might want in the fall. And so, we've had open conversations about managing expectations about when we could actually implement, and even considering what Dr. Hildreth and I have been talking about is, is really if we can't do, make a commitment, and that's what they want, of full-time staff right out of the gate next school year, then what can we do? What are the, what are the bite-sized things that we can actually manage until we can reach a point where we have the resources to actually supply in a way that meets the needs?
Oh, yes, that's a member of.
And what I would say...
And, and what I would say about, um, the two-by-two conversations that I appreciate and about, um, understanding the process is that the issues that we are facing now in regards to feelings of public safety, um, by our parents, by our students and by our teachers are, are not new. Um, they existed when we had SROs as well. They existed when we had, you know, one SRO, two SROs for, you know, over 7,000, um, kids within our school district. And, and so what I respect and appreciate about this process is really actually working back with the understanding of what is the issue that we are really trying to solve here and learning also from our history of, and did that solution that we're landing at now solve those issues back then? If not, then can we get more innovative and creative about what the solution can be and what our partnership, both with the city as well as the school district can be? And so really trying to think outside of the box, um, because it might be that we actually haven't discovered that solution. And so I appreciate the process. I appreciate the fact that there's a, a facilitator also helping through this process, helping the school district and also working, I think, with our police department as well. Um, as I said, to really think through this. And so it's not something that we're going to probably arrive at quickly, but my hope is that what we will arrive at is a, is a better solution that truly meets the needs, um, of our, and I use the word loosely, community. By community, I mean our students. By community, I mean our parents. By community, I mean our teacher and our, and our, and our school district staff as well. And that's me with my city council hat on as well as my, my parent hat on as well.
Any other comments or questions? All right, I'll open it up, um, for public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
We have no requests to speak on this item.
Thank you, bringing it back to council.
Oh, just, just comments whenever we're ready. You know, thank you, Mayor. When I take a step back, look at, and we have a balanced budget, the reserve, which is an incredible position to be in right now with cities around us, millions of dollars in deficits, um, laying off entire fire departments. We're in the process of growing. For Measure O, we were very intentional in our verbiage to the community. It was let's grow with Measure O, and we're growing to see 48 new positions. Um, you know, I, I don't expect a lot of the folk in the public who are listening to go through these entire staff reports, but increasing the health and wellness budget for fire, vehicle replacements for the fire department, new police officers, new vehicles for police officers, our dedicated road maintenance team, increasing our park staff. This is, this is tangible things that we're going to be kicking into gear soon. And, um, I'm excited to see how quickly we're going to move, um, supportive of our Measure V loan so that we can make this happen quicker. One of the first things we did with Measure O passing was we restored Engine 45, um, which is a fire truck with water. And today we actually saw it work and our investment paid off. There was a fire, um, not too far from my home and Engine 45 was at the station. And when the call came in, Engine 45 was immediately able to get on-site and extinguish a fire on the second floor, um, just like that, um, without having to hook up water, um, immediately. And to be able to see our investment so quickly pay off, it's, it's powerful when we look at these numbers that we were having the conversations with the community about what we wanted our city to be. And now we're going to, now we're actually putting dollars to positions and programs and we'll be able to execute on these things. And it's going to be incredible to look back in two years and three years to see how different our city looks. Uh, and I'm just, I'm very proud of the work we did with Measure O and this quick implementation to be able to activate on the promises we made to the community is incredible work. So I just want to thank staff for all the work that they put into this. I know it's going to take time to hire, but I'm excited to share those job postings when they come out. Um, we've got, you know, nine firefighters in the academy right now, um, that are going to be graduating in June. Just, it's, it's an incredible time to be in West Sacramento and I'm very proud of this team for all the work that we've, so thank you for getting us here, presenting on this.
Early.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, and, and thank you to my colleagues. I, I do want to, um, just speak to the things that I'm excited about, about this budget. When I, when I look at this table of numbers and I love, love, love numbers, I do want to translate, um, particularly for, uh, folks in my district, um, because over the past couple of years, um, what we've heard over and over again and what I've heard personally from literally my neighbors, um, uh, as well as just residents throughout my district is just the general sense of not feeling, not only not feeling, uh, safe, but also not even feeling to the point where they can even call the police anymore. Um, because the sheer amount of needs throughout our city may not compare to some of the issues that we are facing, um, in, in District Three. And, and so when we had our strategic planning meeting, um, last month, one of the things I, I challenged our chief on, um, and I appreciated, um, him really stepping up on this, is really what we are looking for immediately, again, particularly in the district that I represent, is wanting to know that the police that we have staffed up are going to be able to respond to the calls, um, in District Three, right? So in Bridgeway Lakes, in, um, in Southport, are going to be able, um, to deal with the, the traffic issues that we face in regards to speeding, in regards to the big trucks going down Marshall Road, and I'll state it again, the big truck going down Marshall Road, right? I, I hear that a lot and as it compares to some of the things that we see on West Capital, it can be a challenge when you're having, um, to deal with, you know, someone, uh, getting, uh, stabbed or, uh, some of the drug issues that we're dealing with West Capital versus maybe some of the still real safety issues that we're dealing with in District Three. And so my hope as I translate these numbers to what does that mean immediately, uh, for folks in, in District Three is immediately feeling that you can pick up the phone and that a police officer is going to respond and that you, you are going to get a response, that you are no longer seeing people flying through stop signs on Southport Parkway, um, because we have really addressed some of the traffic needs that, that we're feeling there. And so that for me is what these numbers immediately translate to, uh, real-life tangible things. And then our roads as well, again, potholes, pothole, potholes. Uh, they impact our daily life. Um, and so seeing those already, as we heard actually during our public comment, already getting filled, um, but really in earnest taking on those capital improvement projects within Southport, I'm extremely excited, um, to be able to turn to our residents and say, not only are we working, but you can immediately feel the work that's happening through this, um, measure that we all worked really hard, um, to, to get past. So thank you.
Thank you. Any of the other council members?
If, if I can, I mean, I know you still have what you're going to do, but this, this was a big lift. Um, I did very, very little of this. I pull everything together and I stand up here and give you a presentation, but, um, as with all budgets and, and especially this time, I mean, this was huge. Um, everybody was working together. This is months of, of pulling these things together and really prioritizing, um, what we're presenting tonight. And we, like tomorrow, I, I go in and we're jumping right into, um, continuing to evaluate, um, the adjustments that are not in front of you today because we'll be back in a couple of months, uh, with the two-year budget proposal, um, implementing, you know, more of these priority, um, priority needs, um, and, and spending Measure O. So, um, yeah, I, I appreciate and I stand up here and I'll, I'll take all the, thank you, thank you, thank you, but it, it's not me, it's, you know, it's all the others sitting back here ready to jump up and answer your questions. So, um, and, and I appreciate all of, all of their help and their hard work. It doesn't look like much once we get up here, but, um, it's a, it's a big slog to get through all of that and get here and, and people put a lot of time and effort, um, into this. So, yeah, I appreciate and I say thank you, but that goes to them.
Thank you. And, and just as far as if, you know, for the members of the public to really read through the details of this spending plan, which, um, when we, when we dug in, um, together, you know, with all the leadership team was to identify the areas that we felt the community resonated in the passage of this measure. Um, in addition to the fire engine, that was something that I've been fighting for because I've been hearing that from the fire department. And I have to say, we have a good fire chief who's been really pushing for that through the years. Um, and, uh, you know, just seeing that the, that there are areas, not only, you know, with the fire department, but with the police department and, and our chief, you know, being on the ready to prepare budget proposals, you know, it feels like we are still behind, um, thinking using, um, Sutter Health Park as, as, as an analogy, when you come in and we're growing, then we're going to be a, a bigger city with more, you know, you, you heard about the housing plans and, um, just bringing in, you know, more people. We needed to grow and jumpstart just as quickly as Sutter Health Park got themselves major league baseball league style, ready to go. We needed to do that. And I am so grateful to the voters for the passage of this measure. We, we are having this dialogue today and taking a look at not having a budget deficit, um, but a budget plan to meet the demands, um, and, um, of, of the city, potholes being one of them. That's something that is dedicated in here, um, and we'll, and we'll continue to invest in that. And if we're not meeting that need, we're leaving a little bit of space so that we can address that. Um, also our police department, you know, just adding more, um, police officers. We didn't realize we would have, you know, um, a change here with the major league baseball team coming, um, but we do have that and our city, um, police department pivoted quickly. Um, Lieutenant Jason Winger is, um, amazing. He's, he's one of the best. I have seen his work. When we did a drive-through for COVID, um, you know, at Sutter Health Park, you know, he was our lead in getting all the cars driven through, um, and moving quickly to get COVID shots. They, it was a drive-through process. And, um, you know, he, he, I just remember, um, uh, the county health department saying, this is the best city that can accomplish a traffic management plan and get people in and out very quickly. And so it's been very impressive and we're very lucky to have somebody like, um, Lieutenant Winger, who's guiding us here in our city and also teaching others to do the same thing. So, um, you know, we're, we're, you know, going to see him, you know, um, move on to retirement planning soon, but he is here one more year with us to help us with this plan. I'm so grateful. Um, wanted to call him out and, you know, mention that. Um, but also to, um, our, our union, you know, but, you know, brothers and sisters, all three of them, who stepped in, um, and helped rally, um, all of the workers, you know, to, you know, back this. And so, you know, as a council, we moved it forward, but, you know, we, we saw a lot of support out there among our union brothers and sisters. Um, and, uh, this, this is going back to invest in them, to make their jobs easier, to help them have more pride in the work that they are doing and delivering for our city. Um, and as a council, we are so grateful and thankful for that work. Um, and all of you here as management who is providing the guidance, um, public works, parks, um, police, and, um, I know public works, you're, you're always unseen, but you do a lot of the work, um, in the community to, you know, make it look beautiful. And our commissioners who are so thrilled to be commissioners today and eager, you know, in many of the areas to see how this funding is getting spent. The more we share the information, the more they can go and talk about the good work that the city is doing. So it's just, um, a great opportunity for our city's future, seeing all this additional revenue, um, seeing new things coming in and us being ready and prepared, um, and grateful for the staff, you know, who, you know, who always do more work, um, with fewer hours on, on a shoestring budget. You hung in there and we're so glad and appreciative of you being here for us. So, um, with that, I'll accept a motion to. Early second. Councilmember Roscoe moved and councilmember Early seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Ocala? Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Solpizio-Hull?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. Thank you, thank you, everybody. Thank you. Just want to say thank you.
Okay, next is our general administration function, part two. Um, we have our council assignments. Are there any reports from our council members?
Got you.
Right, remember Early?
Um, okay, so, uh, today I actually had, um, the Housing Authority as well as our New Hope CDC. Um, we adopted our, uh, mid-year budget as well as our strategic plan. I will remind you all that, um, Ian Evans actually became the executive director, um, for our Housing Authority and presented and, and got our feedback. All that feedback was incorporated not only from West Sacramento, um, but from other jurisdictions in Yolo County and, um, and adopted into the first ever, actually if you can imagine it, strategic plan that the Housing Authority has put forward. Um, we were also reminded that they are turning 75, uh, this year, and so they will actually be celebrating in West Sacramento, um, um, at a Rivercats game, which is pretty darn cool. Um, in addition for, um, Easter, the Housing Authority will be hosting, um, their annual Easter hunt across, um, their public housing, uh, spaces, including the one in West Sacramento. And so if you guys are interested, uh, Ian will be sending out a invite and I can make sure that that gets forwarded, um, to you all as well. It's, uh, really fun. They hide something like a thousand eggs, um, and so just, uh, very fun and very cool. Um, and then in addition to that, we had real conversations around advocacy, um, with everything that is happening federally, um, with HUD and the potential of what budget cuts would look like, um, with the adoption at least of the budget through September. Um, we at least are, are good right now, although holding steady at 2024 rates, even though we are now in 2025. And so that doesn't actually cover 100% of the cost because just like everything else, every year costs increase. Um, and so that was, um, part of one of the things that our executive director, uh, shared that we'll be watching for. And then, um, I, uh, suggested advise that our executive director make sure for, um, our, our Housing Authority that they're working both with the county's advocacy, um, arm, um, and consulting, um, firm as well as wherever possible, our local, um, as well, because we are going to be impacted significantly by this. And so whatever we can do to make sure, um, that we are supporting that, because again, our residents, um, as we heard during the presentation of the strategic plan, are, again, a significant, uh, proportion of our vouchers that the Housing Authority has. Um, in addition to that, uh, we had a capital area, region tolling authority in which I'm the vice chair. That meeting, uh, was, uh, last Monday. And then I will share just in general what, uh, Carter is working on right now is really actually staffing up. This next year is going to be extremely busy. Uh, we have gone to having quarterly meetings to actually, uh, monthly meetings as we are, are trying to build out, uh, a tolling authority, the first ever, by the way, tolling authority in this region. It's starting first in Yolo County. And, um, as I said, West Sacramento plays a really big role in that. Um, and so what does equity look like? What, um, do the actual, just the tolling structure look like? Whether that be that you actually have, um, barriers? Do you have, uh, just a line or, um, for the lane? I mean, it's that level of conversation that again are going to impact every single one of us in this region, uh, that we are deciding right now, um, as well as the staffing. And then how do you even fund, um, something like that upfront, right? Because we know that we will have tolling revenue in the future, in years from now. But right now, in order to even build it, it requires, um, it requires funding. And so, uh, those are the conversations, um, that are happening right now. And then I will, uh, flag for everyone, uh, that this month coming up will be the first of a three, um, workshop, um, um, educational learning, um, experience that Yolo Transportation District is putting on. Um, and it really is just one-on-one about the budget and trying to make sure that we are level setting as we will be going into a fiscal cliff, um, when it comes to our transportation, probably in the next five years or so. And so what does that look like? Where's our funding currently going across our jurisdictions? And as we are going to have to start to make really tough decisions, um, where exactly are the areas where that could potentially happen? Um, and so it will, uh, start, as I said, as a, with a one-on-one, CCOG will be presenting, so will the FTA, um, and a couple of other folks. Um, and again, it's, it's kind of wonky, but it's actually very, very important. Um, we know surrounding us, there are, um, as we heard, not only jurisdictions that are dealing with budget deficits, there are transportation districts across California that are dealing with significant budget deficits and they're, uh, this is just the start of it. Um, and so this is not chicken little. This is, again, we really need to start to be strategic and prepare and that's what we do in West Sacramento. Um, and I'm currently chair of YTD and so that's what we are doing, preparing for the future. And that is, um, my council update.
Any other? I'll just mention quickly, an executive commission to address homelessness. We had a conversation about HUD funding as well and just the uncertainty of, uh, what that might look like and. And having Ian Evans actively engaged in this has been wonderful. And as we were getting the update, I was thinking about, you counsel, about the conversations that you're having there as well. And so can't report back anything specific as in, as to how it's going to affect the commission to address homelessness's funding programs, but it's something that everybody's watching very.
I attended the Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District on March 12th. It was a pretty short meeting because one of our sundry items like approving long range, planning calendar, approving revised job descriptions. And then we had a budget meeting immediately afterward. So that was also, we had a budget audit committee meeting where the year was approved online.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Or I'm going to save it for the next meeting.
Council calendar.
Good evening. No report tonight.
Page 31st is a big day for the city of West Sacramento. Oh my God, it's a historical day.
Yes, it is. Would you like me to give the manager's report on that?
Why don't you go ahead and give the manager's report?
Sure. Yeah, as you mentioned, opening day, March 31st. And then it's 153 nights baseball, so. Give or take. So we have a, a significant update that I will actually be following up with an email to the council that was put together by Amber Seisette, who has been coordinating all things baseball that's related, related to A's and Rivercats season, along with the staff team. So I wanted to give just kind of the high level tonight, though, just because there, there has been significant progress in readying ourselves for opening day and then some. On communications, we're, we're happy to announce that we, we have, we're calling it a soft launch. The website that we've been working on is, is live now. We will, we'll be sending that out to the councils. You can see the features of it, but basically it's a, a helpful way for residents to find out, or not residents, but visitors to West SAC, find out how to get around and where to park, how, where you can go to eat and where you can stay. The other parts of that are, you know, all the questions around parking and, and, you know, everything I just talked about, there's an FAQ section that'll, should be very helpful. Another significant update is I want to make sure the council knows that we're going to be doing a press conference on March 27th. We've already sort of communicated this to you to kind of reiterate some of that same messaging. And then on traffic, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. We have a traffic management plan that we've been working on that is, that is fully developed. Part of that update is we are issuing access placards to people who live and work in the vicinity of the stadium. So that's something that we're going to be rolling out to the people who are eligible for that very soon. On security, there's a security master plan or management plan that we've been working on with the teams and MLB. You'll get some details on that as well. And then probably the most visible things that you'll notice driving around town right now, in fact, some of them just went up. We have wayfinding signage in the Bridge District around Washington.
I saw that.
Yeah, that's, that's brand new. We also, as an aside, related to parking, we are going to be posting sort of A-frames and other signage directing people from the Ziggurat Garage to restaurants in the Third Street corridor.
Right.
In hopes that, you know, that'll drive some traffic that way. There's also going to be the street banners that you've seen kind of the proofs of, those are going to be going up very soon. I think as soon as, they'll be up by next week. And finally, we have the Business Accelerator Program, which thus far we've awarded grants to about a dozen businesses and hopefully more on the way. So that's just a quick synopsis of, of the various topics of work the staff has been involved with in preparation for the, for the season ahead. You know, I can't say enough for the work across all departments that staff has been involved with. And then I think hopefully the council will, through this update, you'll receive from me. And as we roll out to the season, you'll be proud of what West SAC has done to make itself ready for the Major League season, so.
Member Ocala.
Yeah.
Thank you. We hit off.
Yeah, so the, the digital billboards is kind of a separate initiative, but we are, I believe they're in, under construction, right? Crazy. Yeah, fi- five weeks from now they, they'll be, yeah. Now that's kind of separate from this, but it is another option for businesses and, and the teams to utilize to promote baseball and.
Right. Thank you for that update. City attorney report?
Thank you. I have nothing to report this evening.
Staff direction from city council members? Think we have anything on our agenda, correct? All right. No future agenda items this time, so I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay. Councilmember Early moved, Mayor Protem Salpezi-Hol seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ocala.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe. Mayor Protem Salpezi-Hol.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye.
All right, we are now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.[1782.65]